This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, September 19th. To Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2019 Agenda Resolution and the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 7th day of December 2018. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 14, 2018 edition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Rockman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Sankiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Tex Zarni?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Balla?
Here.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, there are a couple of announcements. If there's anyone here for the landwin application, that is now being carried to the meeting of October 10th. There will be a meeting of the Zoning Amendment Review Committee on the signage design guidelines. That will be September 24th, that's next Tuesday, at 9:30 a.m. in Room A. Next Thursday, September 26th, at 7:30, there will be a special planning board meeting. It's an update on the Princeton Theological Seminary redevelopment expanded area. And there will also be special meetings of the Planning Board on October 10th and October 24th. The David Barley Minor Subdivision is now carried to the October 10th meeting. So I'm sure that you've all annotated your calendars and have all of that written down very quickly. If there are no questions about the announcements or no further announcements, let's go on to the findings of facts and resolutions. The first one that you received was the Hun School of Princeton. This is from June 6th of this year. It was a major site plan with variances. Are there additions, corrections, anyone? Jerry?
Yes, I have a couple. Paragraph five, the 3,400 square feet, the second line should actually be 3,500 square feet. In paragraph six, the second sentence says roof leader, it should be roof leaders. And then in the conditions, as Mr. Cohen has pointed out, Condition K really does not reflect the decision and the testimony at the meeting, and that should be eliminated.
So you're moving, or you're asking to simply remove Condition K?
Yes, yes.
Anyone else have anything? All right, with those emendations and corrections, can I ask for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, the next, the two things are resolutions. The first is, let's see, a resolution for a temporary chair, and I'm told I have to read this whole thing. Is that correct, Jerry? That's, all right. The gist of this is that I was elected chair, Louise Wilson was elected vice chair, and since the Board is in the process of hearing the following matters, the redevelopment for Princeton Theological Seminary, I will be recusing myself because I live directly opposite the site in question, and I believe that Ms. Wilson will be out of town for that meeting. So we're asking that Julie Capazone be named acting chair, and we have a resolution here for the Board to adopt such. If someone would like to move that?
So moved.
Did we choose Julie because we knew she wouldn't be here tonight to refuse?
Good thought.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the other resolution is, according to the municipal land use law, the Assistant to the Planner also acts as the Secretary of the Board, and there, we had no provision for what would happen if she couldn't be here to complete these duties. So this resolution asks that Michael La Place be named Acting Secretary and gives him the power to sign papers in Eileen's absence. So if someone would like to move this?
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Now, we have three sets of minutes, and I'm not going to say that I remember all of these clearly, although I seem to be the only person who attended all of these meetings. There's left on the Board, but let's start with the special meeting of June 26th. Anybody have any comments, questions? No?
Was that on a Thursday?
Was that? I think it wa, it should have been.
I only say that because?
Because this is Thursday.
It's June 28th on the copy.
Yes, the date just has on the agenda, the 26th, on the minutes it says the 28th.
Which is it?
So it is the 28th.
Okay, so.
Is it Thursday?
Yes. This was Thursday, June 28th, and wasn't that long ago. Anybody have any emendations, corrections? Anybody?
I did, and I talked a little bit with Kerry about this a few minutes ago. Sorry, I'm terrible about calling hours or days in advance. But on page three, the fourth paragraph that starts, "Mr. Porter reminded," the third sentence of that paragraph just has some extra words and stuff in it. And I think that sentence is meant to read, "Mr. Porter advised that tonight's hearing is not about amending the master plan to add site designations." I think that's what that is meant to say. And if others concur, then I would be happy to move the minutes with that clarification.
It does make it clearer. Anyone else? All right. How would you like to move it with that emendation?
I, yeah, I, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Jeffrey, can I hear that? Yeah, thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I think I have to abstain. I wasn't part of the Board or anything at the time, so.
You're not on the Board, yes.
No.
And I will need to abstain as well, because I have to abstain from that session.
Okay. The only members present this evening, that would be Mr. Cohen, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Zarni, Ms. Wilson, and Mrs. Gunning. So we're good.
How about the next set of minutes, which is the regular meeting of March 7th, 2019, which was not much of a meeting. Would somebody like to?
I will move approval.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? And the regular meeting of July 11th, 2019.
I'll move them.
Okay.
I'll seven.
Seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? All right, that brings us to this evening's hearing, which is Ten Acre Foundation. This is a major site plan with variances. It's 953 Great Road, Lot 3601, Lot 1. And I think, go ahead, Jerry.
No, Kerry advises me that proof of publication and service are in order. The Board does have jurisdiction.
Yes, the proof of publication was received in time. I checked it, and everything's in order.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Place, if you'd like to start us off with your report and tell us what we're doing this evening?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The application before you is for the Ten Acre Foundation, which is a Christian Science Nursing and Continuing Care Facility located on a campus in the northwesterly corner of Princeton, just off the Great Road. The site is actually to the west of Great Road, to the east of Great Road West, now that I've confused you. It's sort of straddled by those sections of Great Road where they split, and it's north of Stewart Road. It's in an area of the municipality where it was mostly residential, but there's quite a few institutions, educational institutions, in the immediate area. So the application before you, actually, just so you know, it's about 36 acres, the campus, with multiple buildings, facilities, and paths and walkways. The proposal is for the two main buildings, which are called the Main House and the Post Office Building. They are going to be demolished and replaced, and they'll be larger than they were previously. The Main House is going to be increased, sorry, my eyes are failing me today, but the new building will be about 5,381 square feet, for an increase of about 1,600 square feet. And then the Post Office Building is going to be a bit larger in terms of percentage of increase. It's going to be a 9,444 square feet building, and that increase will be about 4,600 square feet. So the Post Office Building is, has a larger increase to it. Sorry you can't see this.
It's fine.
Pull it back a little bit.
Michael, I should have actually sworn you in at the beginning.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn. And can, if you can mark that as a B1.
I will. Okay.
Oh, no, I can totally see it. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so that's the two major buildings. There's also going to be an increase in the parking on the site of 12 parking spaces. In 2007, the Planning Board, a part of a site plan review, granted a variant, parking variance at the time. So what you're going to hear about tonight from the applicant is that as part of this additional building area and facility increase that you're seeing, these two buildings being expanded, there will be an increase in parking in 12 spaces. And I expect them to explain to you how parking works on the site. What we've been told is that there's adequate parking, and that's obviously why the Planning Board gave a variance in 2007, but we'll want to hear more detail on that. There'll be additional landscaping added to the site in and around the areas of new construction, where the new buildings and expansions are being built, as well as the new parking areas. The property's in an R1 zone, which is a one-family residential zone. This is considered a religious use, which is a conditional use in the R1 zone. So one of the reasons they're here is because of the need for parking and the parking variance triggered by the expansion of the buildings. You've got the reports of SPRAB and some of the other review committees. Generally, this was seen by the review committees and staff as a moderate increase in an already existing site. Most of the buildings and changes to the site are internal to the site on the 36 acres, screened from view from adjoining uses. And the site is really well-served by area roadways. There's a pretty intricate system of trails, and we would like to hear from the applicant about how the internal trail and walkway system is connected to the regional network for serving the rest of the municipality and the region. Also, an interesting feature of what's being proposed is the center area between the two main buildings is going to be restricted from vehicular traffic. It's going to become more of a pedestrian-oriented area that'll be served by, I guess, golf carts and service vehicles, and then just walkers and bicyclists. So that would be interesting to hear some detail about that. That certainly seems to be a very positive aspect of the changes they're making to the campus. I think that's about it. I don't know if the Board has any questions for me.
Anyone? Questions?
I just have one. I, I was curious, I mean, it says in the memo that the actual required number of spaces on the site is 726, which seemed outlandish to me. I was just wondering what, where that number would have come from. I know they got a variance for a much lower number.
Yeah, I don't know, Derek, do you have the background on why in 2007 it was?
It's just a lot of buildings and a lot of different uses.
Derek, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
So it's based on all the variety of uses on campus, but I think they'll provide testimony to show that their actual need is much less than the statutory requirement.
Sure. Yeah, and I would assume that one of the reasons is that it's a nursing and continuing care facility. Very few of the residents have their own vehicles or are using them, but we'll hear that from the applicant.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, Jack, did you?
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
So with our memo, we reviewed, at the SPRAB meeting, we reviewed it with the applicant. The applicant agrees to the majority of the comments. There's really not a whole lot of comments. Couple of the items are clarifications. We did ask them to provide a conservation easement. They have a lot of, there's a DRCC buffer, there's a 300-foot riparian buffer, so there's a lot of environmental constraints on the property. However, all the development is in an already developed area, so it's basically infill development. So that's, that's basically it. I don't think the applicant disagreed with any of the comments in the memo.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. You know, we got this late-breaking revised memo from PEC with a comment about the increase in rainfall since 2007, when the bioretention swale was originally sized. Have state regulations been updated to reflect the changes in rainfall that we've experienced? Okay, so.
And the, the design criteria in 2007 is basically the same as it is today. It hasn't changed substantially, so, and then, and the applicant will give testimony. It was a little, it wasn't clear in my memo. They're actually reducing the impervious surface. There was some question in the engineer's report, but the bottom line is there's actually a reduction in the impervious surface. One comment we did have was that we asked them to look at porous asphalt or porous pavement for the 12 new spaces that they're adding in, so we'll hear from the applicant about that.
And Jack, in terms of the impervious surface, that, that doesn't take into account the 2007 approval, that's the existing condition.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there anyone here from SPRAB at all to comment? And you all got a copy of that, and you've already referenced the PEC memo. Zenon, did you have anything else from PEC?
No, nothing added.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the applicant, then?
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board, my name is Ryan Kennedy from the law firm of Stevens &amp; Lee, here tonight for the Ten Acre Foundation. In front of you and behind you, we have one exhibit. Mr. Miller asks if we can mark this as our applicant's exhibit. It'll be one PowerPoint deck. There is a, some photos behind me, but they're actually duplicates of what's going to be provided in the PowerPoint. As your planner indicated, Ten Acre is excited to be here, and as a steward of both the community and of their property, they're very proud of the environmental work that they've done. We will hear about that. They're very proud also that this project moves them even further ahead in, as a steward of the property. Things like while there is a net reduction in impervious surface as part of this, they're actually also relocating existing infrastructure and facilities and surfaces further away from environmentally sensitive areas. They're implementing procedures to reduce the amount of salt needed. They are providing numerous benefits for, for this project. As one of you asked, and you heard from your, from the town staff, there was in 2007 what appears to be an insane parking variance granted, and really what that comes down to is the R1 in the former township district has a conditional use for religious institutions. And the way parking is calculated for that, it was based on a formula that assumed that that religious institution was a church, essentially. And I have to imagine that the, the numbers here were related to a per, let's say, per-seat and per-square-footage numbers that make more sense in a busy Sunday afternoon and not the type of institution that you're going to hear about here at, at Ten Acre. So there will be a slight increase, I guess, because of the net increase in building sizes associated with that, but that is made up with some, a few extra spaces, and you'll hear testimony this evening that providing the number of spaces required is both not what Ten Acre wants to do with its land, and it's not needed for the site for reasons that are as true today as they were in, in 2007. We have a couple of speakers here tonight from the Ten Acre Foundation. We have the CEO, Michael Fisher. We will have their Director of Campus Facilities Initiatives, Pete Hatherall. Then our, the project team that they've developed here on the civil site issues. We'll have Tom, Tom Thicke from Carroll Engineering, Holly Grace Nelson, our landscape architect, and then finally, Michael Farewell from Farewell Architects will take us through what this looks like. To start us off, I'd like to bring up, and I think he's more comfortable standing, so if I can bring him up to the front microphone, Michael Fisher, the CEO of Ten Acre, to start talking about what, and help you understand what this is, what the mission is and what they're doing on the site. So I'm going to ask, if the mic is on, that we have Mr. Fisher sworn in.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed? Could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
Fish, Michael Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to thank each of you for being here and listening to our project tonight, and appreciate your time, and also the staff time that's gone into reviewing this and the excellent summary that you received previously. You know, Ten Acre Foundation's been in this community for a long time, about 100 years. In fact, one of my predecessors was here from 1939 to 1989 in this position, so I don't know if any of you remember Burwell Harrison, but he was certainly involved and appreciated this community, and we continue to appreciate Princeton. You know, as, as mentioned earlier about our mission, Ten Acre Foundation is a Christian Science Nursing Ministry expressing God love. Our mission is to heal, and so we serve Christian scientists who turn to God in prayer for healing. Sometimes that's a situation where a person has a challenge that they can't take care of their own needs, and they need Christian Science Nursing, and they come to us. We also have, as I mentioned earlier, we care for those who need tender, watchful care, those what we call age performers, and they may be Christian scientists who have been scientists for all their life, 50, or 60, or 70, or 80 years, and they just need some, some special care. So we're there and we've been there, and our mission stayed the same for many years. We kind of tweak it once in a while, just to get the right expression for the, for the time. But in this project, what we're really doing, I think, is I think about these two buildings, it's our expression of love for our staff. I came here a little over two years ago, and quite frankly, when I came into these two buildings, I was not that impressed. They weren't suitable for our staff, they weren't appropriate for the time, and this project has changed that, and I think that's really an effort to, to show that we care about our staff. And I'm hopeful and I'm sure that you'll, you'll, you'll see, and Ryan's alluded to it tonight, that we also care about our community, and we care about the land, and we care about the environment. There's just a, a deep love that has been expressed in this project by all of this team, and I'm grateful for their work, and, and again, grateful for your review of this. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Unless there's any questions from Michael, I'd like to bring up our second witness, Pete Hatherell, who's the Director of Campus Facilities and Initiatives for Ten Acre.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
My full name is Peter Hatherell. It's spelled H-A-T-H-E-R-L-L.
Thank you, Pete. Before we get started, in addition to your role at Ten Acre, and I know we're going to hear a lot about this foundation's stewardship and, and the importance of the environment to its mission and to this site, but you could start by giving us your educational background, because I think it's a perfect way to start off this evening's story of, of the stewardship of this site.
My educational background is, my degree is in Conservation Management, and my master's degree is in Environmental Science. They took place in England, and it's been dear to my heart ever since, been here in America since 1991.
Thank you. So with that, I'll let you get started.
So I've got a statement that I'm going to read here. Ten Acre has been on the same land here in Princeton for over 100 years. Since 1912, Christian scientists have been here caring and healing others while valuing and cherishing the land that Ten Acre still loves today. On the 90 acres of land that we are now stewards of, Christian scientists care for others, nurture and support them, whether they are here seeking healing, a part of our residential program, or here to learn about becoming a Christian Science nurse. Christian Science nurses and some management staff also live on the property to support the 24-hour needs of our community, meet, meeting any emergent needs. You'll often see our staff walking through the beautiful campus day and night as they go about their ministry work. We do our best not to just talk the talk, but actually to live them in all the aspects of living and working together. As I mentioned before, we've been caring for this land and being blessed by it for over 100 years. Our relationship to the natural and built environment is very important to us. I've been here for over 27 years and have sought out ways to continue Ten Acre's legacy of embracing conservation, stewardship, and sustainability. Over the years, we have purchased sustainable products where possible. We have a free cycling, recycling, and composting program. We've recently installed EV charging stations and purchased electric minivans for our fleet. Internally, we use rechargeable electric carts. We have a bioretention basin and swale with a 7,000-plus solar panel field, which was one of the first in Princeton. We have geothermal wells and hydronic solar on some of our buildings and green roofs on others. We are reducing mown grass and rewilding ecotones. We are using all organic fertilizers and reducing all herbicide and pesticide use. We're planting more pollinator species, and our woodland management supports low intervention areas for invertebrates, amphibians, birds, and insects. We're introducing more native species in perennial shrubs and trees, and we have a beekeeping program and are introducing pollinator meadow areas. Our buildings and systems are becoming more energy efficient, better insulated, and we are aiming to have a 100% LED campus within the next five years. In our social program, we see the integration of our love for God has a natural outcome expressed in the care for our environment. Often, you will see the Christian Science nurses sitting in a quiet area, praying, and supporting the guests as they are nurtured by the soul-filled qualities of our woods, streams, meadows, and flowers. streams, meadows, and flowers. As we walk on the paths throughout our campus, we have learned that a poured concrete path is the kindest and most supportive of those in wheelchairs and those using walkers. We appreciate the white color of our paths that reduce heat sink effects and our low lighting that is safe but supports dark sky initiatives. We're alert in the practical concepts of sustaining these programs effectively. It takes desire and effort to maintain our bioretention basins, swales, and meadows, solar panels, and geothermal wells. Our love of God and mankind leads us to reduce our carbon footprint, to help slow the sudden cloud burst so that our neighbors downstream do not flood, and nurture the insects, birds, mammals, and other species alongside us. The buildings that are a part of this building project are Terrace Cottage, Main House, and the Post Office, and form part of the traditional center of our offices, meeting rooms, and temporary accommodations. The offices of the president and some meeting rooms will be housed in the main house. This function currently takes place at another building on the campus. The 12 people who will work in this building already work at Ten Acre, so we do not anticipate any additional staff need or additional parking or generation of additional commuting. The 10 accommodations in the upstairs of the post office replace those in the existing building. The office spaces and meeting rooms on the ground floor will also be used by people who use the post office now or are located temporarily in other buildings. These are our business office, Staff Relations Department, and our Guest Activities Team. Again, the 10 people who work in this building already work at Ten Acre, so we don't anticipate additional staff, need for additional parking, or generation of additional commuting for them. Beyond these buildings, the additional proposed parking spaces on the northern section of our campus will help with our current staffing levels. On occasion, when we have a gathering where we invite people from off of our campus, we have a certain capacity for that additional parking on our campus and an arrangement with Princeton Day School where we are able to make use of their vacant parking lots adjacent to our campus. These buildings and their systems are in great need of renovation and renewal so they can meet our current needs. With modest increases to the footprint occupied by the new buildings and our strong desire to stay out of any designated wetlands or wetland buffers, our design process has been to maintain an aesthetic fit with the agrarian-style central area of our campus and use efficient and sensitive design features. Continuing the legacy of our stewardship and care for our built-in natural environment, the specific needs for the care of our guests, and the healing journey that takes place here when we have included the following items in our design preparation: aesthetically appropriate buildings, sensitivity to the existing built-in natural environment, energy-efficient systems, good insulation values, photovoltaic solar panels, hydronic solar panels, landscape elements that foster guest interaction with the natural environment, key heated paths that allow for safe walking in all seasons, reduce snow melt use nearest the stream, and are offset by the photovoltaic conditions, the removal of existing impervious surface from the 50-foot wetland buffer, the rewilding of the wetland woodland edge with native species, the introduction of meadows that support pollinators, insects, birds, the pastoral landscape, as well as slowing down rainfall and cleaning runoff, the use of white surfaces for paths, and the addition of a rain garden, the reduction of vehicular blacktop and introduction of pedestrian courtyards and landscaping, and low-level path lighting to support dark sky initiatives. The upgraded buildings that serve the same functions of office space, meeting spaces, and some temporary accommodations for Christian Science nursing staff designed by Michael Farewell thoughtfully reflect the aesthetic nature of the previous structures while using up-to-date technology and building materials. The landscape has been environmentally and horticulturally designed by Holly Nelson, and the site plan has been engineered by Tom Fick, our civil engineer.
Thank you, Pete.
Mr. Hatherell, could you get a copy of that statement to Ryan and send that to me?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Two questions for you, Pete. One, I know you, Ten Acre really values its relationship with the neighborhood. As part of this application, we provided obviously compliant notice, but did you do anything on top of that, any additional outreach to the neighbors?
As part of the letter that we sent out, we invited all of the neighborhood to come to an open house on Monday evening to be able to, Michael Farewell was there, and to be able to see plans and answer, ask and get any questions answered.
And, and thank you. And then, I think you, in your statement and testimony, described the uses at these two buildings, one of which has the name of the post office. I know you went through the uses of it, but maybe some of the board members find it maybe confusing. Is it actually a United States post office? Is that just how it's referred to historically or?
No, it's actually a building for those purposes. We had our own internal mailroom in the building that's just completely internal. It's actually the old carriage house that used to be part, when the main house was the initial building, it's where the horses were, so it's just our, our own name for it.
Before we get into the site plan, if any of the board members have questions about the operations or use of the site.
Yes, no question?
Yeah, I just was curious. I, I know you've said that the people who will be utilizing or occupying these buildings are already on staff, but some of them are located in other parts of the campus. And I'm curious if you can also sort of affirm that wherever they are currently, once they're relocated, you're not going to be adding staff in those locations? I mean, are you essentially saying your staff and resident population is going to be the same after this project is complete?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Yes?
A couple of questions. I'm out of curiosity, both of them. How many neighbors came to your open house?
No neighbors actually came to our open house.
Okay. Also, I, I thought I heard you refer to heated paths. Can you talk a little bit about how, about those paths, how they're built, how they're heated?
Certainly. We have, at this point in time, we have a heated loading dock area where our, our main food service is, and these will be constructed in a similar way. It's a concrete path with an electric filament, basically, that flows through it all the way through the path, and it's controlled by a sensor that senses both temperature and humidity. So it comes on to reduce ice, snow during snowstorms, and also after snowstorms, when you have the snow sitting there on the sides and it melts off and then freezes again, it will reduce that. A lot of our staff who live on property walk back and forth to the nursing halls across the property, as well as our housekeepers, and keeping those people safe is very important to us. But also, it means that we don't have to put snow melt down. So this is, is basically a simple five-foot-wide concrete path with these heating elements in them.
Is your whole campus powered with your solar array?
Yes, it is. And on a, on a day, on a day somewhat like today where we have almost continual sunshine and we actually have not a tremendous heat load or air conditioning load, we're actually net zero energy.
Cool.
Could I just ask, do you have emergency generators as well as this?
Yes, we do. We have an emergency, at the moment, it's an emergency diesel generator which powers the whole campus. So if we, if we lost power, we did in, after one of the major hurricanes, Sandy, for maybe up to seven days, that kept our whole campus powered, and we were actually able to offer charging stations, meals, and places where people could come and shelter or, you know, take a shower for our local neighbors. We reached out to them because we were the only people who had power in North Princeton at that point in time.
On any given day, I mean, between staff and residents and guests, I mean, how many people occupy the campus?
So we probably have about 40 people, staff members who live on the campus at any one time on a permanent basis. We may have another 10 or so who are temporary staff who come and go. And then we have upwards of 40 or 50 Christian scientists who we care for in one of our programs.
Yes?
I'm not sure you're the right person to ask this question, but one of the environmental commission's recommendations that I thought was the most challenging but of great interest is the idea of making these new buildings net zero. And after hearing at great length your eco-friendly ambitions for the campus as a whole, is that something that you're entertaining?
I think I'd probably have our architect give you the detailed answer to that. We are doing everything we can to reduce, to be very efficient, to have very high R-values for energy insulation, adding the photovoltaic and the hydronic systems are, we're trying to get that as, as low as possible. I wouldn't say that we've achieved complete net zero in these buildings, but with the addition, if you take into account our photovoltaic field, they're, they're pretty low. And I'm sure our architect can talk in more detail about that.
With that, I'd like to invite up our civil site engineer of our team, Thomas Fick of Carroll Engineering.
If you could raise your right, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
Sure. My name is Thomas Fick, last name is F-I-K.
Tom, if you could very briefly give the board the benefit of your experience and, and education, so I can offer you as an expert here tonight.
Sure. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and also Pennsylvania. I'm also a accredited, lead accredited professional. I currently work for Carroll Engineering. I've been with Carroll Engineering for 23, for 23 years. I received my Bachelor of Science from University of Rhode Island. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2005.
Thank you. We accept this credential.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to switch slides here. This is a slide of a general overview of the property. This is on our cover sheet, actually, and it shows the various zones in the area as well as aerial background, and it also shows the immediate roadways on, on all sides of the property. The property's approximately 36 acres in size and there are approximately 35 buildings on site with various roadways, trails, pedestrian paths. The, currently, there are two access points, which we'll get into shortly, and both are, both are gated and monitored 24/7. We currently, we just, just discussed a little bit about the parking situation. Currently, there are 137 parking spaces and we are proposing 12 more. On that issue, back in 2007, there was a traffic study that was performed, and at that time, it was, the, the situation on parking was deemed adequate for the needs and operations of the facility. As, as Peter mentioned, that, you know, the staff will reside on site, no additional staff is anticipated, and those parking spaces that we are proposing will be used primarily for, I guess you can consider an overflow for gatherings or events on, on site.
Tom, actually, while we have this up here, I'll just ask you, the, the use here is a conditional use for the zone that requires the property to be more than six acres. I think you mentioned the, the size of it, is it more than six?
It's actually 35.98 acres.
And second, it has to front on a, a major type of road. I think you, you mentioned the, the roads up there, but maybe you could describe what type they are.
Sure.
Confirm that they meet that requirement.
They do meet that requirement. Great Road, which is also, just runs along the east side of the property, and Great Road West runs along the west side of the property.
Thank you.
I'm going to switch slides now to a slide called the Campus Circulation Plan. And this plan shows the various driveways on the property. It also shows the existing parking areas and the existing pedestrian paths that are on site. The, the driveways, the paved vehicular drives are in, are in yellow, the, the parking, existing parking spaces are in green, and the maroon color represents the existing pedestrian paths on site. We are proposing, we have the 12 parking spaces that we're proposing in the northwest corner of the property shown in, are shown in pink. The property currently, property currently has five areas for bicycle parking. SRAB recommended, there were previously four bicycle parking areas. SRAB recommended an additional one, so as, as, as of recently, there are now five park, total park, bicycle parking spaces on site. What this plan does show is the extensive pedestrian paths, trails, used by walkers on campus, and it does lead to various points around the property, namely to the, to the west and south, south being Stewart Road. The paths also lead out to Great Road West, which, which can, the walkers can also access Woodfield Reservation across the, across the road from the property. There are no sidewalks on Stewart Road, and there are no sidewalks currently on both Great Road and Great Road West. So essentially, the pedestrian trails are really contained within, within the 36-acre In terms of environmental constraints on the property, the Mountain Brook runs through the property, which is considered a category-one stream. As a result, there's a 300-foot riparian zone, there are wetlands and transition areas, Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, stream corridor, and also a township corridor. So there is a tremendous amount of environmental constraints encumbered on the property. We, we obtained a letter of interpretation from NJDEP. Our plans do show, just want to note that our plans do show 150-foot transition areas. They were on the plan during the process, during NJDEP's review process. It turns out, when we received the LOI, the NJDEP assessed a 50-foot transition area on the site, which was consistent with the original LOI in 2001. So the plans that we will resubmit will, will include the 50-foot transition areas. So in terms of our improvements, which I'll, which I'll get into in our next slide, which is the area in orange, the hatching kind of, is the area in focus, is, that's going to be our focus, which is where the existing main house and post office are located, as well as the existing paved courtyard. That area that's hatched, kind of shown in orange, is the, the significant area of vehicular pavement that we will be removing. As a result of that, access to Stewart, from Stewart Road will only go into those parking, existing parking spaces, and, which is right there. So vehicles will not be able to traverse through the, the property anymore. So really, the main entrance will be the only access point into the property.
The fire inspector in, in group kind of weighed in on that from a, a site access perspective, and did they have any issues with that plan?
Yeah, so we did meet with the fire official, Mr. Joseph Novak. We presented our plan. to him. He gave us some comments related to an additional fire hydrant and possibly a modification to one of the interior roadways to better accommodate a fire truck. We did specifically discuss with him the, the closing of Stewart, the Stewart Road driveway into the site, and he did not have an issue. He said fire trucks will be able to get into that area with no issue and back out and, back out into Stewart Road. Access will still be available from the main entrance into other portions of the site. Okay, so this rendering is, is basically the, the site plan and demolition plan in the site plan set, sheet four, that's rendered to represent the proposed improvements. So what you can see here is that the amount of green that we're proposing. The, I have a slide coming up that's gonna show a comparison between the impervious coverages existing and proposed. That'll really give you a, really a visual of the difference, you know, in the, in the, in the management of coverage on site. But what this shows is, you know, the, the interior courtyard, which is more pedestrian-friendly now. We have a significant amount of landscaping. We're adding additional trees, plantings of all kinds. It's, the, the site is going to enhance the pedestrian experience and also be able for, you know, continue to use electric carts, you know, throughout, throughout the campus. We've incorporated a lot of green strategies into this site design, several non-structural ones. If I could go into a couple of those. Land disturbance, we, we tried to use the existing already disturbed areas or maintained areas. So, you know, the two buildings are gonna be replaced in the same footprint, and we tried to limit the amount of major grading and also, you know, try to work within the footprint, you know, of some, of some of the structural elements of the property. We, we made every effort to protect the environmental sensitive areas, especially the stream corridor, being that it's a category-one stream. We're not proposing any disturbance near the stream. You know, what we're doing is that we are pulling out an existing sidewalk, which is located here, and that existing sidewalk, it's a paved sidewalk that's going to be eliminated, and a new sidewalk will be constructed just east of there. And in between, we're going to create a woodland edge planting area that'll have native trees and shrubs and a variety, a diverse amount of vegetation. There'll be some details on that later on in our presentation. The, we wanted to protect natural drainage features. We're not creating any new outlets into the stream. We are disconnecting roof runoff and impervious surfaces. The roof runoff is going to daylight now into vegetated areas or swales, so that, you know, the runoff can, can, we're trying to encourage retention. We've reducing maintained lawn areas that are likely maintained through pesticides and other fertilizers and things, and replacing them with native low ma, low maintenance meadow-type grasses and pollinators. One of the, one of the, I think the, the most critical thing, the strategy that we've done is, is reducing the amount of paved vehicular traffic, vehicular surfaces that generate pollutants. And what we've done also is that we've replaced the existing paved drive, which is just east of main house, there with a ribbon drive, which is essentially a concrete, there's two, there's actually two strips where the tires will go for electric vehicles, and in between, we've created a bioretention swale. In between that and just next to that is gonna be a rain garden as well. So all that area, right now, is currently paved, used by vehicles, so that's all gonna be eliminated and replaced with vegetated areas and pedestrian and electric cart surfaces. The other thing that we, you know, by reducing the amount of blacktop and pavement, we're reducing the heat island effect by putting in a concrete surface, which is a brighter surface. So that'll, that'll help a lot of the new plantings that we have proposed. And as I mentioned before, the access off of Stewart Road, you know, will still, will be maintained there for visitor parking, but visitors will not be able to continue on into the site. They'll be, they'll be required to park at those spaces just east, I'm sorry, just west of the new main house. I'm gonna jump onto the next.
Actually, Tom, if you don't mind me taking us back one slide, I'm gonna hopefully not break everything and clear this. If you could, now that we're, you've kind of dove into the newly greener weeds that are gonna be done, just to help orient the board to the three elements, and others, main house, the post office, and then the new parking area. Could you maybe with, with the pen, just kind of circle where on the overall map those three elements are, just so they're oriented a little bit better as we dive deeper down?
So this point right here is the, is the main house, right there in red, and the post office is this location here, and then obvious, the area that we have hatched, or looks like orange, in between is the courtyard. The proposed parking area is up here. This is well outside any environmental sensitive areas. It's on the other side of, it's actually part of an existing parking lot. It's on, it's, it's, the twelve spaces will be constructed on the other side in a, in a maintained area. And again, we're proposing those spaces as, as porous paving, which will be reflected in the next set of plans.
Thank you.
And so this, this plan is just sheet five in our current set. It's the northern section of the, of the area we'd like to improve, and this is, the focus here is, is the changes in the, in the lawn areas, converting them to a meadow, to grasses, pollinators, and also providing a network of pedestrian access for, for staff and visitors. The key point here is that this, this existing paved walkway here that's close to the stream will be removed, and we're pulling the pedestrian access away from the stream, and then filling that area in between with the woodland, with woodland plantings.
And Tom, looking at the colors here, the darker gray, that's the electric carts and occasional cars, and the lighter gray, those are walking paths for pedestrians?
That is correct.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So in terms of stormwater management, impervious, sorry, impervious coverage, what this plan represents is the existing and proposed coverage on site, on site and proposed conditions. So on the left is the existing representation. The orange represents the electric proposed pedestrian and electric cart paths. The purple is the, the paved vehicular access, and the green are the existing buildings on the left side. So you can see the area that's outlined in red is the existing vehicular paved area that we'll be moving. Six thousand five hundred and ten square feet is being removed, and that is just north of the mountain, of Mountain Brook, the category-one stream. By removing that and, and removing access by vehicles will have a great environmental effect, water quality effect on, on the stream. It'll remove all the pollutants from entering the stream at that point. And that will be replaced with, again, with, with pedestrian paths and, and significant landscaping in that area. And on the right, you'll see, you'll write, you'll see what it will look like when that, when that paved area is removed. So you can see the difference. If you focus on the colors, you can see that the, the difference between the left and the right, existing and the proposed, is the amount of pedestrian electric cart access versus the vehicular pavement that will be, you know, the differences between, between conditions. So the new impervious coverage on site will be five thousand six hundred and ten square feet. That is the new, new impervious coverage, which is all due to paths, concrete paths, the main house footprint improve, increase, and the post office increase. So it's all clean runoff. We're not proposing any new vehicular pavement as part of this project. In, in 2007, as part of the previous application, at that time, there were two, they were called the Phase Two Future cottages, and they were proposed at that time, and they were included in the design of the bioretention basin that's off of Great Road West. And those two buildings totaled eighty-seven hundred square feet of new impervious, of impervious surfaces. That plan is no longer in play. Those buildings will not be constructed. So as a result, that basin had an excess capacity of eighty, to allow an additional eighty-seven hundred square feet of impervious surfaces. Since we are increasing our, our impervious surfaces by fifty-six hundred and ten square feet, we, we are still under that, that, that excess capacity, so therefore, stormwater quantity is not, is not required. And in terms of water quality, we're removing, again, the sixty-five hundred square feet more or less of vehicular pavement, which, and that's, that vehicular pavement is, is a generator of pollutants, so we're removing that from, you know, from the site. So there's a water quality benefit in that respect.
Again, orienting us to the, the way these diagrams are done, on the left side, the existing, I'm looking in the post office building area, that's kind of in the center of that existing diagram.
Mm-hmm.
The green buildings are the existing, and that black outline shows the footprint of the new, I guess the replacement of those old buildings with that new structure. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And then the, also on that left side, on the existing, you've shown in, in orange, the existing, but maybe too close to the environmentally sensitive pathways, and then the white or the black outlined that matches the right side, that's where it's being relocated to?
That's correct, yes. It's, it's the same background on both sheets, just the coloring is different to represent the difference in impervious surfaces. And I have two, two more slides. This is the lighting plan. Basically, the, the lighting proposed will be the form of bollards and building-mounted fixtures and a few up, tree uplights in certain, in certain areas. The bollards will be full cutoff LED fixtures. The lighting design is a low-level scheme, which, which, which is, takes into account, you know, minimizing pollution. Everything is dark sky compliant. You know, the goal is to minimize light pollution, especially to the neighborhood, avoid glare. All of these lighting improvements, additional lights are internal to the campus. Again, they're very low, and they're, they're, they maintain the rural quality of the campus. And that's all I have. Okay, so this is a, this is a plan, actually, that shows what is going on at the parking spaces. Again, the parking spaces are up, proposed up in this existing parking lot, which is just off the main entrance, the main gated entrance, right next to the building called Edgewood Apartments. So we're proposing the twelve parking spaces into an area that is an existing grass area. There are five trees that will be removed, and we will replace with the applicable replacement trees. That area will be, will be, will be considered, will be designed as a porous paving area, and also, we will provide a, a healthy amount of landscaping along the edge of that parking lot. And even, and even, including these parking spaces does not exceed the eighty-seven hundred square foot credit that the detention basin, you know, has in its capacity. So we're still under that credit. However, we are gonna get some detention as part of this, these parking spaces. So we'll, we'll provide the design in our, in our next submission.
Thank you, Tom. Unless we have any questions for our site engineer?
Go ahead. Yeah, just, I apologize if I zoned out while you were explaining this, but can you tell me where the existing bioretention swale is located on the campus?
This one, maybe? It's right there. It's in that location, there next to that path in that area there.
Is there any need to make a connection, you know, with the runoff that's coming from new areas of impervious coverage to bring water to that location?
Sure. The, the parking lot, where the, the parking spaces are being added, actually feeds into that, that, that bioretention swale. So we will address that quantity being generated by the, by that parking lot and take into account and release it so that it would not exceed our provisions.
Okay. And with the other pedestrian and building type, I realize that runoff is clean, so it doesn't necessarily need to go through a bioretention system, but do you have an idea of where that runoff is gonna head?
Well, all that runoff eventually will end up in, in Mountain Brook, but what's, what's happening is that all that surface runoff is now going into, into landscaped areas. Before, it was, it was just an open, it was just a driveway where runoff would, rainwater would hit and then run downhill and go right into the brook. In this case, what we're doing, we're disconnecting it. So it's gonna, it's going to hit the, the pedestrian areas and flow into multiple landscaped areas and infiltrate and be absorbed and everything. So we're, we're gonna see a reduction into the brook as a result of the improvements.
And just as a point of information, can you talk a little bit about the distinction or the difference between the three-hundred-foot riparian zone versus the wetlands transition buffer? What are, do they have different requirements?
They do. One is, one is, the riparian zone is under the flood hazard, flood hazard area act rules, and the wetlands and the transition areas are under the wetlands rules. So they have, they have two different, just two different sets of regulations.
But are you essentially supposed to keep out of both of them?
There are, there are permitted, there are permitted uses in each one. Our, we're working with our environmental consultant to ensure that, you know, whatever we propose meets the rules and conditions of each, of each regulatory rules and regulations. So...
So when you use the word disconnect in describing the way the runoff will, you know, go to landscaped areas and stuff, do you mean that there are gutter systems that are going to be disconnected from pipes that used to go to the basin, and now there would just be overland flow? Is that what you mean?
Right now, the, the, the areas around the main house and post office, right now, the roof, roof runoff essentially discharges onto the paved areas.
Uh-huh.
So what we're gonna do is, we're going to remove those paved areas, put in landscaping, and it's going to, in fact, let me back up a second. Not all of the areas discharge on the pavement. Some are piped directly into the Mountain Brook. I'm sorry, let me back up a second.
Oh.
So, so some of them have underground roof drains that were installed, they were there for a very long time. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take them out, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna abandon those and then discharge into the, into the rain garden, into some of the swales, into the vegetated areas, let it infiltrate, clean, clean out, you know, and settle in, and then eventually, it'll find its way to Mountain Brook. By, by then, it's, it's, it's all cleaned out and, you know, it's, it's a much better condition.
Yeah, that is a big improvement. I also had a question that may not be yours to answer, but you're, you know, looking at the maps and pointing things out, made me think about it, and it has to do with the- the trees that will be removed. And if I'm reading the map correctly, which, I'm looking at two very different kinds of maps, so I'm not totally sure how I am, but it looks like there are a number of native trees in reasonably good condition that are being removed that are not in an area that's going to be built on. And maybe, so if I'm wrong about that, please correct me, and if I'm, if I'm not wrong, then can you just explain the rationale? And, I mean, obviously, if it's an ash tree, probably has to go. And, oh, you have a landscape architect who's going to talk next, and never mind.
Yes, I think that we've got a couple of slides showing exactly. Holly's nodding to confirm that, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes?
Just to clarify in my own mind, with respect to the 8,700 square feet which is not being built, has a detention basin already been built to accommodate that or just designed to accommodate?
No, it was designed and it was constructed to accommodate that.
And it was built, okay. And just a second question. I thought Mr. Hathrow had indicated that the size of the tract, which you described as 36 acres and sort of our staff, was considerably larger than that. Did I miss here something?
The stewardship of 90, but the site's 35.9 acres, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if he was speaking about stuff on the other side of the road.
It could have been including the, maybe the solar field across the street.
The total of all of 10 acres is 90 acres, but this particular lot between the two great roads is 35 acres.
Oh, but it extends beyond the great?
On the west side of the west great road and the north side.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
This is perfect time, actually, because, so with that, I'd like to introduce our landscape architect, unless anyone has any questions for Mr. Fick.
Let me just ask a housekeeping matter. Do we actually mark the PowerPoint presentation as A1? I'm not sure we did.
Yes, I didn't physically do it, but yes, we started with that.
And if we can get a hard copy of that, that'd be great. Good, thank you.
I'll have, I have hard copies and I'll also get an electronic for, to carry as well. So I'd like to introduce to my left, your right, our landscape architect this evening. If we could have her sworn in.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So just want to affirm, please state your phone name and spell your last name.
Holly Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N.
Thank you. I'll ask if you could just briefly, I know you're known to many people on this board, but if you could briefly give your background so we can have her, have you welcomed as an expert in the field of landscape architecture.
Sure thing. I'm a licensed landscape architect. I've held a license in New Jersey for over 25 years. I have a private practice. The last time I presented before the board, I believe, was the last 10-acre presentation. In the meantime, in addition to my practice, I am also an associate professor of practice for the landscape architecture department at Rutgers University and the director of the bachelor's in landscape architecture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what I wanted to add was that the last slide that we saw, we were talking about the 90 acres and the 36 acres, and thank you for helping with that. Not my car, so I'm not a good driver. Rectangle three and rectangle four, rectangle three is the solar field and rectangle four is the detention basin that's actually a meadow, it's a wet meadow. And that was in the last building project, and that was the one that I was involved with. And at the time, I think it was the first wet meadow in Princeton and a really important piece of green infrastructure. And that kind of set the bar for 10-acre, and this is, this is just kind of the second chapter in their, their sustainable landscape projects as far as, you know, my role in it. So a lot of that acreage is actually landscape, but it's landscape that's doing, you know, performing, doing stuff. So the overall landscape plan that you see on the left incorporates five new garden areas. I'll start with the main house garden, that's pink at the bottom, and then we've got the village green in blue, and the woodland edge in green, and chapel garden is purple, and the new meadow is shown in yellow. The project began with 10 acres wished to create a civic center, which they call the village green. It's centrally located between the post office, main house, and the nurses station. However, as Tom Fick described, right now, a road is slicing diagonally through the village garden with parking spaces alongside it. So creating that outdoor space for people means removing the road and parking spaces in order to put in a fountain, a formal garden, and some smaller garden areas where you can enjoy sitting outdoors. So here you see images that give you the quality of the types of the different proposed landscapes, from a formal garden of native perennials wrapped by a stone wall on the left, to a natural meadow in the middle, and a new woodland edge fringed with flowering trees on the right. The formal gardens have mostly native perennials, and they cluster at the heart of campus where they're replacing all that asphalt. Many of the garden flowers are meadow species used in drifts, kind of a more formal version of the meadow plants, but they're in garden settings and surrounded by walls. The meadow, as we, as we discussed, will slow and filter some of the stormwater runoff, and it will be further slowed by the woodland edge plantings that are located between the meadow and the stream. The two guiding principles of the landscape plan are to create ecological landscapes that actually improve the environment, and also to make comfortable and interesting places outdoors for people to enjoy. Here's a map showing the different outdoor spaces that are going to be providing views of nature for employees and clients to enjoy. This supports 10 acres' mission of spiritual healing. You see a lot of green on this, on this map, and the green areas denote spaces, gathering spaces for people. There are two blue areas, those are both fountains. There's one associated with the post office and another at the main house. Red benches are shown throughout the project, and the brown circles are outdoor dining, which is found on both sides of the post office, and also at the historical old well at main house. In response to hard-to-tackle issues like climate change, I think we need to look at our landscapes differently from a viewpoint of the ecosystem services that they provide to society. And I think this town is taking an important role in developing, looking at our landscapes differently. This project actually proposes a variety of landscapes that have much to offer to 10-acre, but also to the town. So here you see the light green areas, which are the new gardens, and they are deployed throughout the campus. There are three dark green areas, those are the mowed lawns, and they are intentionally reduced so that we have less monoculture, less mowing, and less lawn chemicals. The brown, the two brown areas are new rain gardens, and Tom was mentioning the little strip down the middle of the driveway, so even the driveway is broken up in terms of creating ways for there to be infiltration. The blue area, again, is a buffer for the stream, and the meadow, which is kind of another kind of a sponge and a filter at the same time, is shown in purple. So this is an ecosystem services diagram that comes from a United Nations report. This is a new way of looking at landscape in terms of the goods and services that the landscape can deliver to us and to the environment. So there's four categories, and they're on that kind of inner ring of the white circle. Cultural, provisioning, supporting, and regulating. So in this project, for cultural purposes, we have the new gardens and the walking paths, which are suitable for wheelchairs, that provide nature views to support the spiritual and religious values that are important to this institution. The woodland edge plantings are supporting nutrient cycling, so that would be leaf litter and decomposition. There's high levels of photosynthesis there and soil enrichment happening just on its own as that decay occurs. Wooded areas also reduce erosion and purify runoff before it hits that category one stream, and the meadow is kind of the belt with the suspenders. But the meadow species are also supporting all those pollinators and wildlife. So I think we should no longer think of our town's landscapes only in terms of trees. Instead, we need to provide rich landscapes of various types so their natural processes can provide for us. Although there are no codes that require developers to plant gardens, gardens provide more pervious surface to filter and slow runoff. This project has over 10,000 native plants that are going to be in the new gardens, and all those plants will be magnets for insects and pollinators, provide wildlife habitat, support the local food reb, and create gardens for people. And that's not all, because the meadow mix is really another kind of a garden that's 100% native with even more plant diversity. And the thing about meadows that's so great is that meadow species vary from year to year because of the temperatures and rainfall and other weather events. So that's kind of like a symphony where you don't know where the flutes are going to come in next year, won't be the same as this year. So as you can see from the next couple of slides showing the different garden planting plans, these gardens were designed with an exceptional level of detail that's rarely seen in an institutional project. This is, is in part because 10-acre sees itself as a residential campus, and also because its staff has a proven track record for caring for its natural landscapes and gardens. Which brings me to stewardship. Stewardship of these new landscapes is extremely important. The ongoing care of ecological landscapes like meadows and rain gardens has not been widely adopted by traditional maintenance companies yet. So this can pose an issue for landscape projects that try and push the envelope in a positive direction like this one does. But 10-acre has been providing top-notch stewardship for the meadow retention facility for over 10 years, and they voluntarily created more natural landscapes on their property, knowing that they can provide that care. Pete Hathrow's background in gardening and conservation grounds him in an appreciation for the care regimens that are necessary to support these landscapes long-term. An important component of stewardship that was developed just for this project is a tree scare care study done by Woodwinds that allows 10-acre to monitor all their trees, and they're particularly looking at the Emerald Ash Borer, bacterial leaf scorch, and Dutch Elm disease. And this plan allows them to monitor and treat where that can be treated. So I did promise you that we'd look at the trees. The existing tree plan is shown here, this is pre-construction. Oops, wait a sec. This is, this is the special one. Okay. So that's pre-construction. These five trees are the trees that Woodwinds said were in poor condition, that are hazards and need to be taken down. The orange category are trees that are within the limit of disturbance, and so that's the asphalt removal, the new buildings that are being constructed, the new pathways. And then I have a separate category for trees that are being removed for new landscapes. So this yellow category is a bunch of hemlocks that are in a stand where we're proposing to put the meadow. And I think the, the position of the meadow as a buffer has a landscape importance that's at least similar to that of the trees. And in addition, if you were out to the site, the trees are kind of like tall poles with a little poof on the top. So when you think of a hemlock as being big and full, this is a hemlock that was probably in a stand, and it's, it's a lot of trunk. So after those trees have been removed, we got, this one didn't work quite well, but the lighter green is post-construction, and the darker green is new trees. And then you can see side by side that the existing trees are actually fewer than what we're going to have after the project. And in terms of the code, the tree replacement schedule, you can see that there's a total of 32 trees that will be removed, and the required replacements for that with the multiplier are 40. The trees that will be planted in total are 64, those are mostly native trees, and that exceeds the code requirement. So in summary, in all respects, 10-acre supports a project that more than meets the landscape codes. Their attention to creating landscapes that provide ecosystem services and places for people to enjoy nature exceeds the regulations and creates a high bar for other projects to attain. Thank you.
Anyone have questions?
I'm curious where the new planting, for instance, the meadows, are you basically seeding them or are you?
Yeah.
Okay. But new plants will actually be planted in the gardens for the most part?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
About how long for the meadow to establish?
So the way you establish a meadow is you do it with a combination of annual grass and perennials, and the perennial grasses take about two years until they even start to grow, and the annual grasses hold the meadow until that time. So the process is usually two to three. Yeah.
Anyone else?
I have a follow-up meadow establishment and stewardship question. So as, as the meadow is establishing with the species that you want, do you actively manage for removing and preventing invasives and that kind of?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
And also in the woodland area, too? I'm interested in both of those.
Okay. I'll start with the meadow. The mugwort is a, is a really invasive species that's been invading meadows a lot more recently. And the prevention of mugwort is partially a timing thing, so the warm season grasses are going to start to germinate in the warm months, and the annuals need to fill in there. And where you have any disturbances because of, you know, a branch falls or something, you can create an area where you could get an invading plant to come in. And that's where Pete comes in. And Pete's been doing that with the meadow. So, so a meadow is, is a beautiful thing, but it doesn't come without someone taking care of it initially to establish it. And many people don't know how to do that. So you can create the thing, and then if you don't have the proper care, it turns into a mess. But I don't think we remotely have that situation here. And I think it's a good thing that this project is happening with the stewardship component tied in with it together, and this is something we, we worked on to establish last time, because when you plant a garden, you need a gardener. So, so that's in place, and it's been, it has a proven track record, and it's getting better.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
I would just say quickly, if there is an actual stewardship plan, like in a loose leaf notebook or something like that, that you use on a seasonal basis or whatever to maintain the meadow and in the way that you were describing, if you're willing to share it, I think it would be a great resource for the town to have and be able to show other residents, applicants, homeowners, landowners, you know, how to do it right. So if you, if you could, I think that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. And with that, I'll bring our... With that, I'll bring our last witness here tonight, our architect, Michael Farewell. Michael, if you could be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth? I do. So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name. Michael Farewell, F-A-R-E-W-E-L-L. And my firm is Farewell Architects here in Princeton.
Thank you. If you could very briefly remind the board of your credentials so I can have you offered as an expert in architecture.
Let's see. I have an undergraduate degree from Yale and a graduate degree from Princeton Architecture, and I've been practicing here in Princeton for 40 years. I'm licensed in five other states, and I'm a professional planner.
Thank you. If it pleases the board, thank you. With that, I'd like you to take the board through what you've designed here and the program for Ten Acre's campus.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for listening to this presentation. I wanted to open with this slide, which is an overview of the campus, section of the campus that we're working on, really to say that this project is more about campus. It's more about outdoor rooms and the spaces in between buildings than it is about buildings. The buildings are generally sort of cottage-like and house-like. They're small scale, generally one, two stories, and by intention, they are modest, and they are fit into their landscape settings, and they are quiet. And so part of the idea of this project was to keep this sense of modesty. While we're replacing two buildings, we have, in both cases, alluded to the architecture of the existing buildings, the traditional architecture. And we've tried to be understated and to focus the attention, in a sense, on the site that Holly and Tom have carefully crafted for Ten Acre. Next slide. These are slides, or images, rather, of the existing main house. The center of that, New Jersey farmhouse that's been much changed over its 150 years of growth with porches, bay windows, wings, chimneys, various types of casement windows, and other features added to it. On the right, an original carriage barn, which too has been extended, added porches, windows, and essentially transformed into its current use as an office building and residential structure. Both of these buildings are in extremely poor condition, and in fact, we began the project with the intention of saving parts of them and found that between the foundation walls, extremely leaky, in the case of the post office, no foundation, with some parts of it with a dirt floor, extremely low ceilings, extremely difficult wall assemblies and roof assemblies in terms of getting any kind of insulation or performance criteria. In addition to all of that, we found that the program that we wanted to consolidate on this site simply was confined and constrained by the existing buildings. So the decision was made to replace these buildings with new construction that evokes their character, not in every detail echoing it, but evokes it, and in other strategic places to do some things that accommodated the new program more openly. Next slide. And I'll start by showing just Main House. On the bottom left, you see a rendering of the new proposed reconstruction of Main House with its opened-up porch, its projecting bay windows, tapered chimney up on the roof, and then on the right or east side, its projecting bay. The image on the right is the facade of the building facing the new central garden. That is a change from the front of the house and from the current back wing, and that's by intention. It's...the back wing is really quite recent construction. It's very undistinguished, and so this new wing on the building gives us the ceiling height, it gives us the sort of echo of projecting bay windows and the scale of the original, but it is fully new construction. The two-floor plans of the building are up above. On the left, the main first floor, and perhaps you can see that in the front, there are simply three rooms in the existing area of the house, what was the existing area. There's a new core, and part of this project is really to make this an accessible, code-compliant building, so elevator access, proper fire stairs, and restrooms and so forth, all those features that bring this up to current code standards. The rest of this plan is a collection of offices. This will be the administrative heart of the building, so the president and his staff, development and management, will be centered here in what was one of the original locuses of activity at Ten Acre. The upper floor, too, is offices around a central conference room and an open central area. Next slide. And here are the four elevations of that new construction. Up in the left top is the new porch, which again evokes the original porch. It's got nice doric columns that were added probably in mid-19th century, and so we've retained those characteristics of the house. Next slide is the post office building, and as you have heard, this current barn structure has a small post office operation. It's mostly offices, and on the second floor, some residential rooms that are being replaced by new, larger rooms that, again, are code-compliant, are safe, have bathroom facilities for each of these guest rooms. So in the lower left, you see the new facade of this post office building. We've retained the basic massing, the positioning of the building. We've retained the sense of an arcade along the ground floor that's covered over and open to the interior offices. The idea of transparency at this ground floor, where the office activities are viewed from the outside, as well as the activity out in these new courtyards are viewed from the inside, is essential to this plan, and you can see it on both the north perspective view and the south perspective view. The interior of the plan is an office function. I think you've heard from a variety of people here speak about the sort of social activity that goes on in this program, not only between staff members, between staff and clients and residents. So this is a very open plan. Residents at Ten Acre invited to come into this plan. There's a small sort of coffee house in the lower right-hand corner, and activity rooms in which people can socialize and congregate and do different activities. The plant's, again, quite open, so we're encouraging a kind of transparency and connection between staff members in this plan. The next slide is elevations of this, and I'll just call your attention to that bow front which faces the new chapel green that Holly has developed. And this is perhaps one of the places on the campus where the building facade emerges a little bit from the green backdrop and relates to an outdoor room. So there's a strong connection between this swelling front and the green space in front of it. The last slide I will show features, some of the sustainable features of the buildings. And while we have worked very carefully to achieve sustainable architecture, it is not fully net zero in terms of energy. We've done a number of things, though, that reduced the footprint of this building in fairly dramatic ways. First, on the roof, we have a solar array, and... I want to work this, I guess, right here. So this area right here, there's the roof plan of the building. On the left are solar hot water, a solar hot water array or hydroelectric array which heats the hot water required for the building, and then the remainder is solar photovoltaic panels. These work in tandem with the area on the right, lower corner. This is a variable refrigerant flow system, really a kind of, I think of this as a kind of state-of-the-art system for an office-type use currently. It's an all-electric system, so the solar array provides much of the power for this system. It's a variable refrigerant with a controller that balances needs for heating and cooling, and it's an extremely highly efficient system. So short of going to a fuel cells or perhaps a subterranean geothermal system, I think this is the best technology we have right now for this kind of use, and it gives us the localized control in each office, in each area that is a requirement. The upper two images show daylining strategies and view strategies, and these are some of the other aspects of the sustainable architecture here. The intention is, again, to optimize daylight, to optimize views of the beautiful landscape outside. There are skylights and clerestory lights and a fair amount of glass for these functions. Lastly, in the selection of materials, we've been very conscious about sustainable goals, so the siding is...on most of the building is boral siding, which is made from fly ash and so forth, and so we've been scrupulous about using materials that are sustainable and have a construction waste management plan that will also meet goals for sustainability. So with that, I think we'll take your questions.
Yeah, I just wonder if you could talk a little bit about the envelope. I think one of the earlier speakers mentioned it being very highly insulated, but you didn't really address either the walls or the windows.
Yeah, so it's, you know, highly insulated envelope with thermal glass on all the windows. We have modeled to keep solar gain down to a minimum in terms of interior heating aspects of that, and yes, we have, you know, highly insulated walls.
Did you guys look into using a passive house design? So you mentioned that it's insulated and you're using solar gain. Is there any elements of passive house?
There are not. The envelope doesn't reach that standard, and, you know, it is an office building with operable windows, and people are moving in and out of the building quite a bit, so we don't have that strategy of sort of absolutely minimizing air circulation and really having a kind of fully sealed building. So as an office building, it's a little bit more porous than what can be achieved in passive house.
So, sorry, just another question about the heating system. So are you still going to have a conventional natural gas furnace in addition to your heat pump, or are you going to?
No. No, there'll be no fossil fuel in the building.
Great.
So it's an all-electric system, and we are currently refining some of the details for the solar system and considering a battery backup, which would be great. You know, it's not generally done, but would allow for storage, battery storage of power generated during the day and used as needed, which would achieve, you know, a very high level of performance for that.
Great.
And I'll just say, on this front of energy, you know, there's this gigantic solar array that they have on campus. We didn't feel the pressure to invest in an extensive array for these buildings, and so, you know, we can't say we're net zero. We're using available resources, in a sense.
Yes, go ahead.
So it's a very, very impressive plan, and this is following on one of my colleague's sort of observations. Is there any thought given to having some sort of way of presenting the vision, the sustainability vision, to the broader community as a model for other institutions?
That's an interesting point, and, you know, how do you get the word out about what you're trying to achieve, both in the landscape and in the building? Ten Acre is a relatively private place, you know, it's not inviting the larger public onto its campus per se. So I'm not sure exactly how it would make this approach really widely known, other than to talk about itself in its promotional materials. I don't know if any of the others here might have a perspective on that.
Sure. I'd be happy to talk to that a little bit. As part of this and something we mentioned when we were talking with SPRAB is, Ten Acre's certainly very happy and comfortable to have either groups of high school children or people from local colleges or people from the local community if they wanted to come to our campus. We'd be happy to show them our current sustainability practices and give them tours, and we're happy to be approached. That's kind of where we are at this point in time. We have a lot of practices that are something that we're actually doing. These buildings will add to that. You mentioned, as you said, about maintaining, how we maintain our existing meadowlands, how we maintain our existing bioswale, bioretention basin. These are all very standard practices for us, and so whether it's local employers, people from the community, we're happy to have them come and visit us. So we will continue to think about how to make that known in the community, but I guess I'm beginning by making it known to all of you here.
I mean, it's clear that you haven't been driven by a desire to meet a LEED standard or something like that, that this is more about an ethic, et cetera. And yet, I'm curious about whether any of the decisions were informed by LEED or whether if you decided to try to do, you know, a LEED certification. You know, is this just sort of outside of that framework entirely or partly in, partly out, or just like parallel universe?
Yeah, no, it's...it was discussed, and, you know, didn't seem particularly a necessary metric for what Ten Acre is doing. But having said that, I think you've heard that, you know, if this wanted to be a LEED project, it would need LEED, at least LEED Silver and maybe LEED Gold criteria fairly easily. You know, just haven't elected to pursue that certification.
I had a curiosity question. You've referenced the earlier buildings for both of your new buildings, and you've imitated certain aspects of them or copied certain aspects. Is this because the community feels a certain amount of affection for this? Is this because this is the way the people who work here operate? Or, you know, there can't be very many people left who remember George, what was his name, Barmore, who was the predecessor of this man, who really built this place. So I just wondered why this linkage, just sentiment or?
Do you want to weigh in on that? What was the...
My question is, you know, you're really at the stage where you need new buildings. These buildings are really outlived, their usefulness and so on, and yet there are a lot of aspects of what's been designed that harks back to the buildings that are going away, and I just wondered why this decision was made.
Well, to be honest with you, one of the members of our board in particular actually joined Ten Acre in 1968, and she and her husband were the...
And she and her husband were the, to be the, you know, successors to Mr. Harrison. And, and they were to some degree. Her husband passed after a few years, but then she was president. She's been on, on and off the board. So she's coming close to her 50-year mark also. We have another president, just a couple before me, that was probably there 15 years. So there's some affection for, great affection for Mr. Harrison, great affection for the history, great respect for that. As, as Michael said, it's, they're not buildings that can be preserved and they've accepted that. But we think that there's a, a tie to our history. It started, as, as Michael said, very modestly. And I think we, we would like to continue that. I'm coming from, quite frankly, California a couple of years ago, so I don't have that personal connection, but I can see it in our staff. I can see it in these really revered members of our board. And, and so we're just trying to respect that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No questions. I just want to, you know, make comments about how wonderful this is. I mean, it really is a kind of what we hope to see in application. So I want to commend everybody on the, the staff that, you know, put this together. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I think at this point, maybe we should look around and, and say that we're going to open this to the public, but I don't know. So is there anyone here who would like to speak to this application who hasn't had a chance? No?
We, we have our builder here who's about to start construction. I don't think he's going to protest.
He's eligible to speak as well as anyone else. This is an open meeting. Anyone? All right. Well, let me close the public voting.
What I'd like to do is go through the recommendations in the memo by Jack and Derek and also the PEC memo and the Sprab memo and just see if we can have closure on all those. So what I'd like to do is just go through them one at a time, see if the, what, what our staff's position is on them and what the position of the applicant is on them. I, I would start with page three of Jack and Derek's memo. At the bottom, the staff comments, proposed landscape plan should be reviewed by the landscape subcommittee. Do we think that's necessary after the presentation?
I think so.
What's the feeling of the, what's the feeling of the board on that? Should the landscape subcommittee review the landscape plan?
And if it's helpful to the board that the, for reasons that may be obvious, that our landscape architect was not available to present for, to Sprab, so that the, the level of detail that you saw tonight was not something that Sprab saw.
Yeah, I'm actually reading from Jack and Derek's memo, but that might probably predated any, maybe any discussions also.
I'm sorry, what did Jack say?
Well, Jack, a staff comment, this is Jack and Derek, and this on the bottom, page three of the memo. A staff comment, number one, the proposed landscape plan should be reviewed by the landscape subcommittee.
I mean, as you saw, it's a pretty extensive plan. I don't know that the landscape subcommittee would, would add to that, but we kind of, that's kind of a difficult.
Yeah, I mean, my general feeling is that the presentation we saw tonight had a lot more detail than the packet that we reviewed. And I, as a member of the landscape subcommittee, I don't feel a particular need to do further review.
I agree with that. I, I certainly don't feel the need to scrutinize it. I feel a selfish need to flip through it and understand it and, you know what I'm saying?
And ask more questions and find out even more.
Right, learn, learn, learn. But I, I do not want to, you know, create a hoop to jump through and so, you know, access to, you know, you know, plans and details and that kind of thing, as I had asked before, I think would, would be much appreciated. But not a, not a review, not a formal review that requires a presentation of that.
I don't think we need another report or?
Okay, so one will not be a condition. Two, does, do we want, do we need any comment on that? I didn't completely understand it.
That was just a clarification. They've done that at the Sprab meeting.
Okay. And then number three, at the end of number three, this is on top of page four, it says the planting schedules for the new parking does not indicate shade trees. The plan should be revised and reviewed by the landscape subcommittee. Any comment on that with respect to the shade trees by both our staff and the applicant?
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot, yeah.
Three shade trees. See the, the diagram at the top has, the little thing is the full parking lot.
Oh, uh-huh, yeah.
So you see one tree on the top right and two on the lower left. They're both honey locusts, they're native.
And that's for the parking lot? Is that sufficient to, you, you felt, you guys comfortable with it? Okay.
Yep.
So that won't be, will not be a condition. Then halfway down, staff comment number two, the letter of interpretation indicates adult wetlands to be of ordinary value or intermediate value requiring buffer zero to 50 feet. The site plan drawing indicates that a portion of the wetlands are extraordinary value requiring a 150-foot transition buffer. I think they showed, as I recall from the testimony.
They've clarified that. It's actually a 50-foot buffer. And then we asked for a conservation easement encompassing the, the furthest limits of the environmental constraints.
Right, and we'll get to that's, oh yeah, and that's, that's staff comment one, which we will put in as a condition. And then on the top of page five, staff comment one, the applicant should consider the use of porous asphalt or porous pavement.
And they've agreed to that.
Okay, so that, that'd be a condition. And number two, that in light of the testimony about the, the size of the tension basin and they're basically withdrawing their 2007 approval, I don't think we need anything.
Plus, the porous pavement actually addresses that condition also, so.
Okay, so we don't need it. Okay. And by the way, the resolution will say that the applicant has indicated that they're not proceeding with the 2007 approval and it, we will therefore vacate it, just so we have a clear record on that. Then halfway down on page five, the applicant should consider adding bike racks.
And, and they've done that already.
And it's, is actually in the plans?
Yes.
Now, on page six, we want, L is noise, that's one of the standard criterion, criteria. And you have to comply with the, the hours of, of operation for the noise ordinance. But, you know, since it's a, it's a requirement of code, it's nice putting it in because it reminds people about it, but I'm always a little uncomfortable putting in requirements as condition that says you have to comply with this standard in the code because then somebody else could say later on, but you didn't say we had to comply with that standard in the code, so.
Right. That's, we didn't envisage that being, that's kind of a statement in the report, not necessarily a condition of the approval.
Okay, that's good.
I appreciate that.
And then the bond estimate, I assume there's no problem with that? Ryan, it's 5.0A?
Yep.
Okay, and the approvals, I, no problem with that, I assume?
Yep, those are conditions, yep.
Okay, and Jim, just moving on, let's do the PEC memo first.
Jerry, I was about to say, I, I just read through this, this, I don't believe this, this might be the first time we've seen this memo. I know it just came out recently. I don't believe we have an issue. I'll just ask Pete to come up while we do this, just to make sure I don't miss something, but I think we've got answers to these.
Okay, sure.
So as to the, the first condition, we've already received the NJDP LOI.
And have you provided it to the town?
If we haven't, we certainly will.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that as a condition then. Okay, and two? And Jack and Derek, if you could jump in on this as well?
Two is the one that I don't believe they were going to agree to. There's no, there's no standard for that at this point.
Okay. And number three, again, Jack and Derek and Michael and Ryan?
We'd hope not to do new geotechnical investigations.
Okay.
They, they have submitted geotechnical information for the site.
And we're comfortable with it?
Yes.
Then four, what about that?
They have to comply with that.
I'm sorry?
They have to comply with that.
They have to, okay. Then five, do you think?
We, we discussed this one. It's our, we'd love to get as close as possible, but unfortunately the testimony is that we, we can't quite get to net zero for this.
Okay, are we comfortable with not having that as a condition?
It's something we're not allowed to require, so.
I'm, I'm sorry?
They, we like to ask, but.
I think it's fine.
Okay, so we will not have five. Then seven, that's, well.
If that's the ordinance, then we have to comply.
Okay, so we'll just put in the, the resolution, compliant, there'll be compliance. And the EV charging station should be added to the plan.
They, they've shown that they have that already.
Okay, right. And landscape maintenance plan should be developed.
And I think they've indicated that they have that already also, and I think they've agreed to share it with the, with the town.
Louise is even going to get a copy?
Pardon?
Louise is even going to get a copy, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then just lastly, the, the Sprab memo, which is right at the end of the packet. There's a set of recommendations on the first page, number two. And it's about bike racks. The applicant was accepting for request to provide one more covered bike rack?
So that, that's been added and shown on the plan.
It's been added, okay. And the solar panels?
It's a notation on the sheet that we'll comply with if.
And you've done that already? It's already been added to the, Ryan? That's already been added to the sheet, the notation they wanted?
No, the, the sheet, oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's one of Michael's sheets, A104, identifying the types of panels.
So we'll let that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay. And then seven, I think is the next one, about the municipal arborists being asked to review six trees that are identified by woodwinds as being in poor condition prior to removal. Where are you on that?
They're identified on the plan?
Yeah, they're not, yeah, there's numbers associated with it. Number three, seven, 26, 67, 106, and 113. Okay, that's fine, okay. So that's it. That would be all the conditions, the one we just identified. So it's preliminary final major site plan approval, conditional use approval, and the parking variance. I don't think there's any waivers, are there?
No.
I'll move to approve the application with the conditions as enumerated just now by Mr. Muller.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Anything for him? Call the roll on that place?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Burman?
Yes.
Mr. Plin?
Yes.
The Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stedler?
Yes.
Mr. Tassoli?
Yes.
Spossit?
Yes.
Mr. Yalvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.